This conference will now be recorded.
You ready?
I believe so, sorry about that.
Oh, yeah, I'd like to call this meeting of the Order for Planning Mission to order July 11, 3:34, yeah. Welcome all. I'm going to call, yes, I've called it to order. Commissioner Barrett is absent. She's away and could not be at the meeting or online. And Commissioner Protam, or future Commissioner, Commissioner Lawton is sitting in at the table. She won't be able to vote today, but we welcome her for volunteering. I really appreciate you being willing to contribute. Approval of the minutes, June 6th. Do we have approval, any items or a motion to approve?
I move to approve the minutes.
Can I have some comments about the minutes?
Yes, Commissioner Head.
Sorry, do we have to turn these mic on? No, okay. I really appreciate that somebody is doing the minutes. I just found that there was a lack of detail about our discussion around the safety issues for granting access to the property that we approved the split on. I'm just not sure if we, you know, it's possible to request that there be more detail. There was a very extensive discussion about that and the safety issues surrounding that and the head start. And I feel like it was sort of condensed into one very short paragraph. And I think the safety concerns of the planning commission weren't captured in that. Mind if I speak again?
So I see here on page three, you're speaking with number four, public hearing A, the small IV, opponents.
Partition.
Reddick, and testified they are concerned about the safety of children in the neighborhood and out of traffic. So you would like to have commissioners also echo that or spoke to it or what? Would you like to add something to it?
I mean, I don't, you know, I don't think it's worth going back to the conversation and red documenting all the concerns that were expressed. I just, I just want to note that, that there were multiple, you know, commissioners that did express concern about the safety and that potentially it wasn't, you know, heard or taken seriously. I just feel like the detail, a lot of detail in that conversation is missing.
Crystal?
At some point later in the meeting, when we're not doing the, later in the meeting when we're not doing the agenda, I would like to comment on such an issue as that. Because I think there are things that could be suggested maybe that wouldn't be part of the, not part of the approval because there's not, we can't emphasize that in a petition. But there are things I think we could do.
Okay, so you're saying is what's documented here?
Yeah, I'll put it online.
Okay. So what's, what's here is specifically related to the partition? This is, but not the extensive discussion? So different set of minutes for the, specifically for that judgment?
So when I was working on these minutes, I adhered more to Robert's Rule of Order. One of the key rules out of there is it is supposed to be a record of what was done, not what was discussed. However, if it is the commission's prerogative, I can add more details. I just would need the directive to do so.
Okay, like Crystal's saying, maybe there's a separate place if, because there was, this was a hearing, maybe there's a different place for that. But I just, you know, it is part of our public record, these minutes. And I think it's important that they have, you know, that they be detailed enough. Because it's hard enough to remember from month to month to keep all the detail in our brain, you know, so it's the, yeah.
Yes, it may not bear on the, well, it, it, it is, so our directive from the state, I printed it out and I didn't bring a copy with me today, but also besides the motions made and the votes, the major points of discussion are also required to be in the minutes.
Okay.
So you might, you might want to refer to that document. It's, it's listed in our, or I can, I'll send you a copy.
Okay.
We just don't put names, but everybody says.
I don't think that's necessary. The sub, this, I believe it says the substance of the discussion.
Okay. So just for my own edification, on then subsection nine of that same section, instead of vote passed unanimously with no further discussion, would you prefer if it said vote passed unanimously with commissioners also noting concerns for the safety in traffic? And then go into more detail about the things that were specifically discussed in that hearing? Would that be more what you had in mind?
Yeah, I think that would be really helpful, but I just want to make sure that it goes in the right place. Sounds like Crystal's saying that.
No, no, that's, that's what I'm going to tell you.
I think.
About the issue.
Okay, I see. Okay.
I think the right place for that would be, there's a number on the next page, on page four, it says commissioners discussed that access from Washington is the best option. Two, commissioners also expressed concern about safety of children in the area.
Okay. I'll get that.
More detail, yeah.
Yep, no problem. Thank you for the recommendation.
Anything else on that? Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I move to approve the minutes.
With the amendment?
With the amendment, amendment, yeah, amendment. Second.
The move in second to approve, approve the minutes as amended. Commissioner Head?
Yes.
Commissioner Lovendahl?
Yes.
Commissioner Thielen is yes also. Chair comments. We have a big agenda today. Crystal would like to do a training. It's going to go on for a bit, but she said that she could split it if, to the next meeting if, if the short-term rental thing goes too long or if we need more time. So the short-term rental thing is important. Very important. And hopefully we are getting down to where we need to be for that. So I'd just like to say that and let's just move on to public comment, public comments. Do we have anyone online who would like to make a public comment about the agenda item? If not, let's move on to the short-term rental ordinance discussion, pages six through 25. So I gave the document on page 23 to Mr. Milliman. He asked for it. He asked, he was going, said he would, the interim planning director or the interim city manager asked for where we were with this. And so I wrote down all of the things from my notes that the PC, that the planning commission had recommended. And he asked for what the city council had too, and I think there may be one or two in there that the city council recommended. And the current city manager, Mr. Hoddle, went through last week and created this document based on the document that I had given him. And the only item that I saw that was not addressed was item number, if you look on page 23, number two, oh, excuse me, not that one. That one, that one wasn't addressed either, the renewed piece. But the proof of use, the item seven, which we asked for, was not in there. And I actually saw him at the pancake breakfast. He said he had just overlooked that it was, it was, it was on purpose. So hopefully that'll be in the new draft. So that's really kind of where we're at. I included that, another document about our, explaining our position basically to the city on our recommendations regarding the cap. That's on page 22.
I'm trying to imagine it.
Oh.
Play the board, just tell me the board.
So it's just before, it's at the very, it's at the very end of the, of the ordinance.
Board.
And it says, Planning Commission Recommendations Regarding Short-Term Rental Cap. And then following that is the document I submitted in April with our changes. So that's kind of where I'm at. So let's go ahead and talk about it now, or see where we're at. Commissioner Head?
Yeah, I just wanted to inform the commission that I did talk to Justin Vanel. And Justin Vanel is a local contractor, builder, and inspector, home inspector. And he said that he would be willing to do inspections. And he said he would also be willing to, I informed him it wouldn't be a full home inspection, just an inspection to declare that the residence was safe to occupy as a short-term vacation rental. He said he would be willing to give input on the list, the checklist that we come up with for safety issues. He said there are things that we might not be considering. So, and I told him I would follow up as soon as I had more information.
Thank you, Commissioner Head. That's awesome.
Real quick, did you state his name again?
Jess McVanel, M.C., capital C.A.N.N.E.L., I believe.
It's not Vanel, it's Vanner?
It's McVanel with an L at the end.
McVanel.
Yeah. He has the McVanel subdivision between, off of East of Jackson, between 15th and 16th.
Commissioner Lovendahl?
I have a topic that relates to inspections. And, can you hear me now? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Anyway, as it relates to inspections, we're not, we, we state in our ordinance that we may do an inspection by the city administrator. But I did some research on 13 cities. They all require an initial inspection. And I think that even though that saying that we may, I think in fact it's very important that we have an initial inspection. Because one, we are giving them a license and we're signing out saying, yes, you're okay to go. But we haven't looked to see if you've met the requirements of our ordinance. In my mind, it doesn't have to be a building inspection with all the other, you know. What we want them to be in compliance with is what is stated in our ordinance. And that can be done by Jeff McVanel or can be done by a deputy, it's done by fire chiefs, it's done by various people who research, who say, uh, research. So I just think that our ordinance should state, that we should recommend that one initial inspection be done. And some cities do it annually, some do it every three years, some do it every five years, some, you know.
So it would be a prerequisite to getting the business license for, should?
Yeah, they would have to, we'd have to.
Or for renewing.
After, after they have met all the requirements. And it doesn't have to be, you know, like, like I said, I said in the paper on this, there were some comments by the city council, well, they don't want strangers coming in inspected. Well, they're renting the strangers to come and live in their house. So that's a whole, a whole lot of water we can, but I do think, and I wonder if we have a liability, if we go do an inspection, we give them and they carry on without us inspecting, do they have some things to fall back on? So I think it's really important that initially we inspect. And we just say, yes, you got the vendors, you have the park system, you got the, you know, those things we outlined. And I, I mean, and I don't think it would be at a big expense, and I think it's very important.
So would you, so I believe that where we were, I believe what we had voted before was that we, the word may, that the city may inspect. Would you like to make another motion and have us weigh in on this?
Yes.
Because that's what we're doing here. That's what we're doing, is we're, we're basically saying what we want.
Right. I would like to make the motion that before issuing the license, that they pass an initial inspection conducted by the city desert me.
So we have here, so for, for the vacation rentals that are already in operation, that are going to be grandfathered in, maybe it would be upon renewal for them, the annual renewal. Because we have here under section 05.05.080, operational requirements, G, health and safety, that's on page 15, fire and emergency safety, a completed checklist for fire safety shall be required. The licensee shall be responsible for completing the checklist. So it sounds like we're requiring these things, but it's up to the licensee to, it's beyond our system basically saying that these things exist, right? These can be included in an inspection checklist.
Yeah.
We have a motion on the floor. So is that, I mean, I'm not a Robert's Rules of Order guy, but I think.
Is that my motion?
You made, you made a motion to.
I made a motion to require an initial inspection. And for those grandfathered in, would also have an inspection.
They will, they would be under new rules, yes.
They'd be under new rules.
I have it written as before initial approval or initial renewal after code change inspection required for approval. Is that accurate? And some goes to?
On-site inspection.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second, second.
Okay, discussion.
Okay, sorry, that was my discussion, it was a little bit finisher.
So any more discussion? Yes, I think, I think it, I think it's a good idea to have to require an inspection also. So I'm going to call a question. Commissioner Head?
Yes.
Commissioner Lovendahl?
Yes.
Commissioner Thielen, yes. Thank you. So these are, these are advisories. The city council is actually, hopefully they'll listen to us. But, but we are, we are the citizen input for the, to the city. And hopefully our word carries some weight. So thank you for doing that.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Lovendahl?
I can submit this paper for, my findings on inspections when we go forward, when we have that discussion with the city.
Yes, yes, the one you submitted at the last meeting? Yes, I was intending to have that submitted, yes.
Thank you.
Anything else on the short-term rentals?
I was wondering if we were going to have Daniel Kearns review the final, the final corrected document with perhaps the addition, or additions from today?
I believe that he is not. I believe that John Hoddle is going to, he is a lawyer, or he was a practicing lawyer. And I don't, I don't believe, I don't believe, I think he's going to, the city's going to save money and he will look it over.
Okay.
That was what I heard.
Okay. I mean, the reason Daniel Kearns, because this is exactly what he does, he helps cities develop short-term vacation rental ordinances. So I would like to put it on the record that I think we should continue to, to pull with him on the development of the ordinance.
Put that on the record.
Thank you.
Thank you. The other piece that, and I don't know whether we need to belabor this, but maybe I, maybe I, let's see, it's the item about the renewal, the renewal, the, in 04OC. It says.
On page number 10?
It would be on page 10. This is the cap on the number of short-term rental operating licenses in effect for the city of Port Roper. And they're striking out the number of 40 and just saying by resolution, which is what we had recommended. The number of short-term rental operating license that can be in effect at any one time for defined residential areas 1 and 2R. If at the time of license application for a new or renewed short-term rental license there's not a room with an applicable residency area cap. It doesn't make sense to say renewed to me. Because if you've already got your license, you're already under the cap and you're not going to be kicked out. That's the, that's the idea of a cap.
I think, well, they would be kicked out if they didn't renew, right, annually?
If they didn't renew.
Right.
That would, if perhaps the, sorry, if an inspection, you know, turns up some things they need to fix, maybe that might be a reason why renewal might be denied or if they don't pay a fee.
Oh, it could be renewed, it could be denied for any number of reasons, but it wouldn't be because of the cap.
Okay, that's okay.
That's what I, that's my point. I'll bring that up with Mr. Hoddle.
Right.
And hopefully that would be addressed. That was the only other piece I saw of this, besides the inspection.
So the cap, 40 is what we decided on with the city council? I thought we went lower than that?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's going to be based on whatever the existing number of vacation rentals is currently?
That's our recommendation.
Okay.
The number 40 was an early draft.
Okay, yeah.
And that was 33 and then.
Do we still not have any resolution on what the total number is?
The most up-to-date number I have is 49 total.
Is that in?
Residential?
In residential?
I think of that as total among all zones. If I am remembering it to be residential, that's somewhere between 10 to 1,000.
Really?
But that is me going off my memory, so I will.
It would be great to have that information. I mean, we've been trying to get that information since November before, longer, longer, you've been trying longer, yeah.
Yeah.
Seems very useless.
We've been in the process of defining what a law of short-term rental is too.
Right, also, but who currently has a license, so who is currently operating as a short-term vacation rental?
Maybe they'll maintain with that.
So we have made our recommendation very clear.
Right.
That it would be the number that is existing at the time of the ordinance as defined by the ordinance. Commissioner Lovendahl?
To go back to what Jen said about maybe having Daniel Kearns just look over our ordinance. Do you think that John has the experience? You know, there are any pitfalls or, this is a city council decision, so I get it.
My own personal feeling is I believe that if John puts it, if I look at it with John, I think it'll be okay because I know what Kearns is, I know Kearns pretty well. I mean, I know this stuff. I've read this many times.
Actually, what do you think?
Yeah. Anything else on short-term rentals?
I have a question.
Yes, please, please put the microphone, so it's speaking in the microphone, so you can hear it.
Used to this for sure. Is there going to be change of ownership tracking? How is all of this going to be tracked?
When, if, if a property is sold, the license goes away. So this is a licensing type ordinance, it's not a land use ordinance. So the county has a land use ordinance. Once it's, once it is established as a short-term rental, it couldn't be sold as a short-term rental. This is a business license. And you, in transferring a business, you lose the license.
Okay, thank you.
If that answers your question.
Something could get sold and we wouldn't know. Is that what you were saying?
Yeah, we wouldn't know, but it wouldn't make a difference, I guess.
Yeah, well, it would, this is a small town, I think people, I think it's, I think people are going to know, yeah.
No, I'm sorry, I'm going to.
Okay. Are we ready to move on?
Are we? The piece about, I don't know, yeah, we're ready to move on.
Okay. Planning matters, we have a planning, training workshop. I think we have time to do it.
Okay.
Are we going to talk about the training, things application?
Yes, it's, it's number, it numbers to other business.
Okay, so you have all the delta messages on this?
It should, it's PowerPoint.
I have them now. Yeah, there it is.
Do you want to go over here or?
No, no.
Okay.
I appreciate you.
Okay, I'll do this.
I'm going to try to get through the discussion.
Okay, I'll do this.
Okay. Okay, so this planning training is quite broad. And Wei Redomstey, who is our LCDC representative for the South Coast, would like to come do planning training with you again later, and I'm all for that. I think that, you have, you're supposed to hear these things seven times before you understand them and remember them. That's just the way people are. So I don't think it hurts to hear some of the same things twice. So I put this together, I, I have an advantage, I'm part of East Street, because I was around when these planning rules went into effect. That was started in 1975 and a lot of things were getting acknowledged by the state into the early eighties. And I think that's when our starting house, it was a very long process. I think that Port Roper had zoning before, but here the, oh, it's moving, whoever got it on, but he'll move it back. So let's, so the second thing, and here is an overview of the history, the statewide planning began in the 1970s. And today, every city and county in Oregon has a knowledge plan. You have to have it. And we have, we have acknowledged plans. So anything that we change in our zoning ordinance or our comprehensive plan, which we'll talk about later, has to be changed by ordinance if we want to change it. And it's kind of a big deal, it's expensive, there's a lot of rules about how you do it. So when we start changing plans and things under the land use codes, it's a big deal. In fact, some things like the height restrictions, everybody in town was notified. And that would be the same if we do a bunch of code changes on housing or something like that. So the day-to-day decisions are made locally, but there's a heck of a lot of top-down stuff in the state laws that we have to include in the planning. So you guys can break in anytime you have a question. This is not formalized, you know, just grant you this, but this is for discussion if you want to. So let's go to the next, there it is. So here's the regulatory framework. There's the Oregon revised statutes on the left, the Oregon administrative rules, and case law, and everything is done by that. There's local comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance, which we have and use all the time here at the city. And everything is done by that. There's local comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance, which we have and use all the time here at the city. There's other approved local plans that we use, like we have sewer plans, wastewater plans, hopefully water plans. And all of these become part of our comprehensive plan if we use them and rely on them, and they're adopted by the city council. Now, on the right, you see this list in yellow. And there's statewide goals for all of these things. Citizen involvement is, is the number one goal. And that's why I really like this planning commission. I think that you like to bring things forward and that's why citizen involvement in Port Rufford seems to be a going thing. The cities who let their planning commissions drop because there are a lot of work sometimes in little towns to keep them up. Or zoning codes can be made very administrative so that nothing comes to the planning commission anymore. You kind of lose your citizen input on things, unless you're really careful. So the second one is land use planning, that's a statewide goal, number two, and land use planning is about how all these things fit together. And there's a bunch of rules for how that's done. So the one we usually work under is the zoning code, but the comprehensive plan is actually higher level than the zoning code. And we'll look at that later. Okay, then we have agricultural lands and forest lands, those are mostly out in the county. Natural resources, we have those in the cities as well as the counties. Maybe not as many in the cities, but we do. Air, water, and land quality. Natural hazards. We have maps for natural hazards, and we have people that have to do natural hazards plans. Have geologists do them before they can build them. Recreational needs. Economic development, housing, all these things have to be balanced. There's number ten, housing, there's money at the state right now where we could update our code if we have the ability to get it together to get it up there by the end of the month with our, how much it's going to cost, and I know we could get it, but we have to do our work first. Public facilities, we're supposed to have plans for those, we do have plans. Transportation, energy conservation, urbanization. That's another one where we could use a little work, because on our urban growth boundary is huge. But our agreement with the county is not good. It's, it's not specific, and so consequently, there's no real input from the city into the urban growth boundary. And to fix that, doesn't mean we can demand a lot of things from the county, nor do, nor does the city want to take over that old urban growth boundary, which you could, but you don't really have the capacity to do it. County's doing it, let them do it, but you could ask for specific things. Or you could ask for notice further ahead so that, you know, you're not scrambling in the last three days, like when you find out, and then say, oh, we got to get this going. And so I think it, it should be more specific, and that's something we could put in for this grant with the state. Right now, I think if we wanted to do that as part of our action, but it would be to just talk about it with the county and see what we could do.
Excuse me, I have a question. So the grant is for us to update our city code?
Yes, we have a lot, the city code, we have a lot of, our comprehensive plan is more up-to-date than our city code. But our city code has a lot of things where statutes, state statutes have redefined things like RV use, they've redefined family, you know, ours says family has to be by blood. We couldn't even enforce that, you know, and that's not, that's not how today's society works. There's a whole bunch of other things in there that are just out of date. And we worked on the code in twenty twenty-two. We had it ready to go to the public hearings. And then it stopped. I think they wanted to work on the STR ordinance or something, I guess it could work. And so we didn't get back to it. So now we would have to kind of start over, although we have a good basis.
Are we talking also about making the code match up more with statewide planning goals, ensuring that statewide planning goals for land use, for example, and natural resources are being?
Well, we have, we have pretty good things on that. I mean, if there's, if we're building on a wetland, or if there's a wetland on the property, we have to define it, we have to send a notice to the, to Division, Department of State Lands, saying that somebody's going to build there, and then they comment and say whether it can be done, or what the distances are, and things like that. We have riparian areas, shoreline areas, that we have people put them on maps, and they can't build in those. So a lot of this is taken care of, but we just aren't up to date with a lot of the state laws, like especially about housing. They've been doing a ton of those. Not a ton, but a lot over the last few years. And a lot of them don't apply to us, because they, they don't apply, we don't have to do them for cities of under ten thousand. But we thought we wanted to do ADUs and things like that, and if we want to do those things, there's money to do them right now. And they would like us to do them. It's not like they're not wanting us to do things. It's more like they're not making us do them if we're such a small city.
So basically, we have to put a proposal together by the end of the month?
Yeah, I'm putting the proposal together, but I think the question will be whether the, we're going to need things from the city staff. And you have new staff. Or no staff in some things, like we don't have a finance director. And so, you know, there'll be things like how much match can we put in? How much money do we want to ask for for some of these things? I can task out my time, but I can't necessarily task out how much it's going to cost for a mailing list to everybody in town. That would be something Joseph would probably follow up with if the city manager wanted him to do that, he could give you the thumbs up. I think he's going to do it, but there's a bunch more, you know, a lot of it is financial and city managers happy. Okay, thank you. Excuse me. So energy conservation, number thirteen, organization fourteen. Then we'll add, anyway, that's not ours, we don't have to worry about that. Estering resources, we don't have to worry about too much, but they, they do call the shorelands an estering resource. And we have, we have rules about that, and we have how you define it and stuff like that, so the plans all work together. We have coastal shorelands. In our code, we have never had an application in the coastal shoreline. But we've had partitioning in the coastal shoreline. And partitioning defines where you can build on that lot, and it goes into the platte. So the platte lasts forever. I mean, that's the theory. And then beaches and dunes and ocean resources. So we can go on to the next one unless you have some more questions about that. The, the state was pretty thorough in making us do those plans, that's why they took so long. People had to find a lot of information, and we didn't have the internet in those days. But more recently, we have a lot of information put out by state agencies that help us keep up with some of this stuff. So, I mean, you, you can go now and find what the, we can find what the housing requirements are for the state. We can find things about what the populations are, things that in those former days were hard to find. It was all by mail, you know. Okay, so the planning commission does a couple of things that are on here, long-range planning. So that's why if we would change the code or something, you would be involved in that. You would have the main role, really, of recommending to the council what you want to see happen. The second one is implement existing plans, and that's what you do every time you come to a planning commission meeting. There's a, there's a code, and you're implementing it, and that is one of the reasons why we didn't, I didn't tack onto that safety issue that the person was discussing here about that property last month. Because a partitioning is different than a land use. So a person has a right to do their partitioning unless there's some safety issue with the road or something like that, where you're going to get access. But it would be the use that is causing that safety issue, once the use goes in, and maybe, maybe, I would suggest, when something like that happens, it wasn't the, I said you shouldn't be concerned about it, it was, I didn't think it could affect the partitioning legally as a, should say legally, but, you know, I don't think we have a right to stop a partitioning, because somebody might put a use on there that would have a safety issue. I think that you guys could, though, say something to the person who testifies, like, we can't attach this to a partitioning. But as soon as that activity starts on that lot with what they're going to do on there, you'll need to go ask the city if you can get some cones or something, or if the the people who are doing the building permit get some cones, or even put it in Joseph's head that when he does the planning clearance, you know, you could maybe do some safety things on that road that don't have to do with partitioning. They're more of what's happening in a neighborhood. So those would be my thoughts, and that's what I was going to share with you. I don't, it wasn't that we didn't think it was important. It's maybe, it's in a different place.
I'd like to chime in here. So after, after that meeting that we had where the concerns were raised, Crystal actually called me and said, it might be a good idea to reach out to the gentleman, Mr. Pittman, and, and let him know that he is, that we're listening. So I actually did, I went and talked to him. I gave him my phone number, and I gave him the city phone number, and I told Joseph that he may be calling him if there are issues. I said, if there are issues, we want to know about it. So that would, that would fall under the use category, as I understand it.
And the activity that's happening.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's not just the construction of the place, but, you know, the increased traffic, and because that's been basically a dead-end street forever. You know, and.
And they might, they might want to, the city might want to put signs there, or, you know, there's just different things that can be done, although the use will be an outright permitted use. So that's why I think the neighbor guy that's concerned about it is very important. You know, even though maybe he didn't think he was important when he left, he is important, because he's a link to what happens in that neighborhood. I hope that, I hope that helps, you know.
Yeah, that does help, thank you.
Okay, so others at the city, so the staff works with the public to provide information, and the city council has the final say on some of the land use activities. We can go on to the next one. So long-range planning is stuff like comprehensive plans, statewide planning goals, zoning and subdivision ordinances and rules, and you know, when you're doing overreaching things that apply to a lot of people. The statewide planning goals, federal regulations of clean air and clean water are, are long-range. We can go on.
So what is the planning commission's role? Chris, I have a question, can you answer that? So for example, the visioning document that was drafted in two thousand and six, that was a culmination of, you know, the collaboration between repair and planner, city planner, and the administrative, the city council, the planning commission, prominent community members, how does that fit into, I mean, none of that is?
That is actually part, that came, if they adopted it, and I think they did, fairly certain, at least they had a lot of input, and it's, it's got a place in your comprehensive plan, because it feeds right into the comprehensive plan of what you want to have happen down there.
And if we feel like that is not being adhered to, then you can.
Bring it up.
Okay.
Yeah. And especially on the planning commission, you could bring it up and say, you know, I feel like we're not implementing this. You have, though, I think the building heights changes, implemented some of that.
I think we've made incremental progress.
Right. Are there things you think aren't?
Well, I think there's development happening that is not consistent with the, with the, with that vision for the ten MU, yeah.
I bet I, I bet I know one that you're talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah. And it might not be specific enough. We might have to put something more in the code. I, I think that if it's the building I'm thinking about, that we did follow the code and everything. I'm not aware that we
No, I think that.
missed something, but, yeah.
Right, I think there were some gray areas in how it was launched, the project, but I think, you know, it does adhere to the code of the ten MU in terms of setbacks in building height, but not consistent with the vision for that part of town.
You can always, you can always propose, you know, you could look at that Battle Rock MU zone and see if it really says what you want it to say, and if not, and we're doing code changes, that's the time to put it in.
And I did have the comprehensive, the comprehensive plan looked over externally, and was told that it lacks a lot of detail, and it doesn't.
Well, we have, we have a whole, I mean, there's a whole bunch more, but yeah. It does, the comprehensive plan is not a detailed, it's just a list, it's a bullet point of vision.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so also, you propose revisions to plans and ordinance. About if you felt something was needed. I mean, the council doesn't always want you to do all these things, but certainly you can bring these things up and, you know, flush it out. See if it's important. So the planning commission oversees discretionary permits. You haven't had any of these lately, you've had only the land divisions, the partitioning. But you will be having unconditional use permits soon, I believe. If, if they file, and.
Sorry about that. I believe it's actually two conditional uses that'll be coming in soon that you'll be able to look over, so we're going to get some experience soon.
You could. We do have a site plan review in that Battle Rock zone, and you could actually do a code change that would have more site plan review in the Battle Rock zone. Then, we only have for really large structures. And if you, you felt that that was important, that would be something where then it would have to come to the planning commission, and you could check, you know, you could even add some stuff. There's six things that people have to put, I don't know, three of six, or six of twelve, or something, on their buildings to try to give it some character.
I remember that.
And you could even say what things you don't know.
Right. Is that something that you would put in the proposal for the day two or three?
Well, that's not what they're funding this year, but if, but there's no, they're not going to look at everything and say, you shouldn't put that in because you're not funding it. So I'm not going to use it to sell. Sell what we're doing, but it is something that if we're doing stuff, this is the time to do it, at the same time, because you can slip it in there, and it doesn't have to be a big deal. I mean, I don't mean to slip it in so nobody knows. I mean, slip it in, so it doesn't have to. Yeah, so it doesn't have to take a whole notice to the city or something.
Right.
Yeah.
I have a question. On a conditional use permit, someone gets a conditional use permit for buildings or something, but they never do anything about it. Years go by.
Yeah, there's a certain amount of time on it. There's a timeline on it. I don't, I don't remember what it is, but they can't just go and twenty years later say, I'm going to do this. We'd have, we'd have to look at the code. It's section seventeen thirty-two. I think there's a timeline on it, but I'm not sure. Okay, follow the rules for public meetings. Greg does that every time. Be informed, and I do think you guys are all trying to be informed. Be informed, and I do think you guys are all trying to be informed right now. And then I think the most important thing is the last, and that's to treat everybody with respect. And I appreciate it that Greg did reach out to that guy because, you know, if you come and you don't understand how organ planning is, and nobody pays attention to what you say, you might think that they're just not hearing you. And it's not always true. You don't want it to be true. Okay, go on. Okay, types of land use decisions. So the ones you have done so far are called, well, there's legislative, and that's the policies and ordinances. And we haven't done a change on that since height restrictions. But if we do a bunch of code stuff, that would be legislative. Legislative means broad, applies to everybody. It's not specific to a piece of property. So code changes are definitely legislative. So I think that's probably all we have to say about that right now. We can move on to the next one. So what you guys have been doing are quasi-judicial changes. In other words, they're kind of like legalistic. You can't talk to people that are involved. You can't do this, you can't do that. But you make rules based on what the, I mean, the rules are in the code and we go by those.
I have a question. I know I did see a slide in here about ex parte communication, but doesn't that only apply when, when one is serving on a quasi judicial body?
I believe so, yeah. Because when you're doing a legislative change, you can talk to anyone about it, right?
Yeah. And also, just in general, you know, we rather be able to have opinions about any...
Right.
So it's really when you're serving as a quasi judicial body that you can't engage in ex parte communication?
Right, that's where it's like a law thing. Because if you're on a jury, you're not supposed to be talking, except when you're on that jury.
Right.
Yeah. And, and you are kind of like a jury on the Planning Commission. So if we did a zone change that applied only to one property or something like that, that would be legislative, that would be quasi judicial. So the state gives us all those rules about who can speak when and the stuff that Greg reads at the beginning of the meeting. And, you know, they get tiresome, but I think it's good to go through them because the public doesn't know what's happening otherwise. And you're not supposed to show bias or conflict of interest. You can, you can show bias. It's okay if you say that you think you're biased, and you'll do your best. But, I mean, we all have biases. But a conflict of interest gets more into money matters, and so you definitely have to pull yourself out, or, yeah. So we'll get to that later. So staff can have all kinds of contact. Joseph and I can talk to anybody about anything during a quasi judicial. It's our job to keep the public informed, and it's okay if we hear what they have to say. We just have a different role. Okay, so the staff role, here it is. Administrative. We provide information to the public. We provide information to the applicant. We provide notices to the newspapers and the public. We follow up with state and county agencies or other organizations that may have concerns or information. We provide information to all parties. We cert, we send out decisions. We follow the rules and sign zoning clearance letters to allow building permits, grading permits, et cetera. So anytime that planning is screwed up, it's a, it's, it's a trial to fix it. Okay, moving on. Citizens' rights. Every citizen has the opportunity to be heard as long as they're respectful and civil. They have, they're supposed to have the opportunity to present and rebut evidence. In other words, they don't have to agree with what the applicant says. They don't have to agree with what the staff says. They don't have to agree with what you say. But you guys have the right to incorporate citizen concerns in most cases. Sometimes it's how or where you do it because I would, I would say that you thought, we didn't give you that right probably on a land petition. But I think you do have some rights, even on a land petition, just to kind of amplify those things and tell people how they can be involved. People have a right to findings of fact. And that's why I'm always saying to the Planning Commission, "Say what you're basing your decision on." So if you make a motion and you have an application in front of you, it's good to say, "Based on the staff findings," or you could say, "Based on the staff findings, except I don't agree with such-and-such finding on page nineteen." And then we all go look at it, and you tell us why you don't agree. And you can even make a motion and say, "I make a motion that we change this finding." That's exactly what you're here for. I mean, we try to do it right, but, you know, we don't have all the information either because you have the public out there talking to you, and you may agree with some, some things that they say. Sometimes they may know something staff didn't even know, or have a different take on it, and you may think they're right. Then that's your right to incorporate those findings. So that's why I always say to you, the findings, and I especially say it to you when there's nobody here because I want you to learn how to do it so that when you have room for all the people, you could do that yourself almost without looking, you know, to me or Greg like, "Well, what do I do?" What do you think, Joseph? You know, just so that you, you kind of own it, and I think it's good. So we'll move on. So the basis of a decision is based on the criteria in the comprehensive plan, the zoning ordinance, the subdivision ordinance, state laws, or even like our Battle Rock special plan that we have. You apply the criteria in the code to the facts that are presented, and the result become findings of facts. Findings of fact. So every finding of fact that Joseph puts in his reports, they usually are based on something in the code or city codes or cities, things that are going on that have to be addressed. So how do you do a finding of fact? So here's an example. I cheer you in. So the code is kind of loose here. It says, "To allow the use, there shall be assurance that the property is not subject to landslides." Then, an example finding would be, "The property is not subject to landslides because Oregon-registered engineer E. Geological has entered a statement that he has tested subject property and that he has determined that there is no potential for landslides to the property of the site." I mean, that's just kind of a simple...
I have a question. So if, say this finding is incorrect, who bears the, who is responsible if something goes awry?
You mean this finding?
You mean this specific finding?
A geological report. That's why it's required, they have certain things in it, and it's required to be by an Oregon-registered engineer. And our hazards area, we have a section in the code that addresses hazards. And it's very specific. It says, "If they can certify that there are no potential for landslides or hazard issues," they certify it and they're done. But what happens? They go on and on and say, "But if this happens, if this happens," then they can do this and this. And I don't accept those because I say, "If you're saying it might happen, then you haven't really certified that." But, but they don't wanna certify it.
Right.
And then we also have another situation where there'll be a, a hazard study, and the owner will keep shopping until they find somebody who says, willing to certification.
Yeah.
The only good thing about that is, I mean, they can't do that when they're already, when they've already presented it as part of their application. But on some permitted uses that are, they don't have to come to the Planning Commission. They, they do that with the staff. And, and I, I think now that we should just take the first one and make them... I mean, I don't, I don't see how they can shop like that. And finally, they find somebody agreed to say it, and then we have to accept that.
Right.
But it's also very tricky in today's climate where you have people writing emails constantly and sending things back and forth. And so there's, you don't hardly ever know when it's final because they'll send you one and say, "Is this what you want?" And then you say, "Well, no, not, you know, that won't do it." And then they send another one, and so I don't know what the answer is. And, and I'm not a geologist, Joseph's not a geologist. The other option that we have is to hire a geologist to look at what the geologist has done.
Right, to assess the...
Which is very expensive for us. Or to make them hire another geologist.
Right, if there's any question.
Right.
Yeah.
So I don't always feel great about that whole thing, but I don't know what to do about it. I don't know what other jurisdictions we do.
What do you get to now?
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, thanks for answering, I appreciate it. And we really don't have, you know, our own engineers and stuff, they don't have geologists here.
Right.
We don't have anybody with expertise to vet a, a report. The one that I know, well, I shouldn't say that. A lot of them claim they do it, but they really don't have geologists on board. That's a specialty. Okay, moving on. So findings. Identify the standards and criteria, and that's what we try to do in the staff reports. Weigh the criteria with the facts to make the findings. If some criteria aren't applicable, well, then we say so. You know, maybe we already got something in that kind of said it, said what the, what it's supposed to say. If something conflicts in our ordinance, it's okay. We say that, that's a finding. And then we say why we're choosing the one that we do. And you guys can do that, too. You tell what you believe to be the facts and why, and that would be something you guys could do. If you hear something and you think it's a fact, and it's not what we brought up, you have the right to speak up and say, you know, and we don't, we're not gonna be mad. You know, that's your job. We don't, "I don't agree with this." And then we're supposed to help you figure out you do wanna stay there. That's why you're on these boards. So findings for big projects or contested activities can be organized by the staff and brought to the next meeting. That needs to happen. Especially if there's a lot of changes to what's in the staff report, and there's things happening, and you, you guys make a lot of proposals for findings that if we had to change them, we could bring them back to you. Okay, move on. So the public hearing, so the chair tells the audience how it will be conducted, how the decisions will be made, what's relevant testimony, which is supposed to be, you know, something from the code. If you had a roomful, Greg, you could take a poll to see how many people wanted to talk. You could also take a poll to see if there's, how many are for and how many are against, or if they're just asking questions. And then you know kind of how to organize the meeting on the spot. Okay, move on. Public hearing. You know, you've heard this many times. And Greg can also adjust this a little bit, you know, public hearing because maybe, as you look down that bullet list, you know, you have the applicant's testimony. You always have that first, and that's the proponent. And then you have the opponent or the neutral. But maybe people just wanna ask questions, and they don't wanna be put into those boxes. And if there's not very many people involved, you don't have to use the boxes. You know, they can say, "Well, I just wanna talk." Okay. So, okay, we can move on. So here's ex parte contact. This is what you were talking about earlier. When you're doing something on somebody's property, the reason you're not supposed to talk to people about it is because any discussion that you as decision-makers have about that property should be with the public, just like we invite them to come and testify. So don't let them talk to you about something because then you have to report it and invite them to the meeting this year. So we talked about this a little bit before. We all have biases. You can just kind of, you know, when the chance comes, share your, share your inclination or your judgment. Just say, if you think you can, that you'll try to make a fair decision. But a conflict of interest is if you are making some money by this or somebody in your family, you probably don't wanna participate. Or if you're losing money by it. You know, it's just, that's a different matter. And we do have time. That's on your statement, right? So we have a time when you bring those things up. So some of our code is not clear and objective, and that's pretty often the case in most cities. Our code is not bad. It's just a little outdated, but it works if we use it. Sometimes, sometimes people have, but, so you're, you're supposed to make it as clear and objective as possible so that people know exactly what we're... And that's what I'm saying about if we wanted to do an urban management agreement with the county, make it as clear as we can of exactly what it is that we want. Do we want them to use our road standards? Do we want them to make bigger lots instead of smaller lots so they can be divided if they come into the city? Do we just want to get it thirty-five days ahead of time so that we can organize to talk? Those are, those are all the things that could be done. Okay, move on. I think we're getting close to the end. Was that the end? You guys have been so good in writing down things, and I hope it's helpful. You know, there's a lot more than this. But it gives you an idea of where these things stand. And you also have in your packet the comprehensive plan. These are just the goals and policies and a few of the recent things that we've done. But certainly, the plan can be changed also. And it should be. As you can see, we've had many times, it's been changing, changed on the first page, or the second page. So that amendment in 2019 was because we did tsunami rule, tsunami stuff.
I have a question, Crystal. How, are we 100% sure that we're going to get that grant submitted by the end of the month?
No.
No, okay.
Well, I mean, I'm going to get my part done.
Right.
But I don't, I don't, I mean, I don't know. I can't tell the city administrator what to do and I don't know if he's got other things to do. I will call him. I've sent an email, but we've, and we've talked about it a couple of times and I think he's for it. But it kind of, it's, it's going to take some time because we don't have a finance group.
Right.
And so that's why I'm hesitating because I don't know if he's going to step into that or if he, I think Dave, who used to do it, could just do it.
If they're a, is it an annual grant?
No. This one's for two years and this is the first opportunity. We've had to get state money for quite a while.
Is there any way that we could convey our...
I think we should say, I think we should say that we are all for doing code updates and getting the grant as soon as we can.
I mean, yeah, would we be able to address things like setbacks on parking in the 10 MU?
Well, most, yeah, possibly. I mean, a lot of it has to do with the housing stuff. That's what the state wants to hear right now. The, if, if parking's an issue, I guess you could start organizing your thoughts of what the problem is or something so that we could maybe get through it.
It sounds like a motion would be in order for someone to move that we recommend to the city administrator that, that we apply for the grant, for the state grant for planning for code updates.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we recommend to the city administrator that we apply for the grant to make code updates.
Seconded?
Recommend to the city administrator we apply...
For the grant to make a code update that the city would go with, Crystal. So do you two get the grant in before the deadline?
By the end of the month.
Yeah, is it the 31st, July 31st?
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't like...
It's been moved and seconded, we're, we have discussion now, we're discussing this.
Okay, should we tell Joseph?
I will, I have the paper here. So we have a motion, a second, to recommend to the city administrator that we apply, that we apply, I guess the city apply. The city apply for a, a grant to make code updates by July 31st.
We should, we better say, we're, we're always transmittal and stuff like that. We better say, I think that's a Monday.
I have a motion to recommend to the city administrator that the city apply for grants to update or to make code updates before July 31st.
By the end of...
July.
Or July 28th or something like that. What is the 20?
The two, no, I think it is the Monday, you're right, for 31st. So maybe Friday to 20.
Thursday or something.
Thursday to 27. Yeah.
27, that's amended to the 27?
Yeah, amended to the 27.
July 27.
Thursday, July 27.
Crystal, how much are we allowed to apply for a sale limit? Well, is this the time?
Yes, we're having a discussion on a motion now.
The housing grants are very specific and they're, they'll probably be very big for bigger cities because they have all this stuff they're required to do by state law. But we are exempted. And so I've talked to the state staff, they know what we're doing, they saw, they saw it last year. They want us, they want us to get it in. They want to help us with it. They helped us last year, they helped, they looked through it, they said whether we were addressing things properly because I always like to have another pair of eyes on it that knows planning too. And they're really urging us to get this done. They wanted to help us, but we're in a special category. And I forget what that's called, but it's kind of like the leavings of the, in other words, we're not going to get a $40,000 grant or something, but some other big city.
Whatever's left over.
Well, but I, yeah, but I think, I was thinking that we would be probably in the range of 13 to 20. And that's probably about all we could handle because we don't have the capacity to do those.
That's really just for staff time, isn't it?
Yeah, a lot of these grants, they'll pay for the consultant's time. And then, so that would be me, I would be doing it as a consultant. They'll pay for some of the hard costs like the major 56 notice to the whole town. They'll, they likely would use, like Joseph's time, which he would put in a lot because he would be taking, he would not only be doing that major 56 notice and all those envelopes and everything to everybody in town, delivering them to the post office, you know, everything you do for bulk mailing. And he would be, he and I would be working on the notice together that goes out. He'd be putting a lot of time into it. I think most of that would be match, could be match. That's how the city usually did it. Their people that were on staff were used for match. Not that they're free, but you know, that gave us some match.
But then find match, not a that for monetary?
They used to have, on most of them, they have like a 20% match or something. But this year they don't, but they just want to see some match. So it just shows that we're committed.
We have a motion, we've discussed it, is there anything else? I'd like to, go ahead.
Just for clarity, Crystal, this is a housing grant through the Department of Housing?
No, no, it's through Department of Land Conservation and Development. And it's for code changes.
Oh, okay.
Code changes to address housing. And, but they, there was, there's no law that we can't put something else in there, but we can't spend a lot of time on something else. Like parking might be a huge issue. I mean, we've already dealt with it here in the planning commission several times and the council hasn't approved it, right?
So it would be really to alleviate the, to create long-term housing for...
And if you possibly, if you want that and if the council wants it. And also to update our definitions and things and to make options for maybe cottage housing that's smaller and weighs that that could be incorporated into...
Yeah.
Yeah, probably not so tiny, but like 900 square feet or something that would, could be part of a proposal that somebody would bring in. Does this come in the form of an application or is it, it's an online application and you fill in everything? And then I have to do a detailed summary of every task and what it's worth.
And then that would be approved by the city council?
Yes, they would have to approve it. And then there's other parts to it that city staff would be doing. Joseph would be trying to figure out his time, working with, with the city manager. The city manager and the finance information, yes, they would decide what that time is worth with the match.
So would, would you have to have a finalized application before the city council meeting? I think it's on the 18th.
I, I don't know that they're going to require to see the whole application. Those are things I need to know.
You can ask for permission perhaps to...
Well, I think I would explain it on a summary of this is what we're doing and then they would have to write a letter saying that they approve.
I think the details of how it's going to work out are beyond...
Well, I just, I just want to acknowledge that if she needs the city council approval, that the meeting's on the 18th and our deadline is the 18th.
Yeah, that's why I'm worried. That's why I'm saying things like, well, I'm not sure.
Well, what we can do is we can tell Mr. Howard that this is what we want to do. I think that's, that's really what we can do.
That's the best.
So we have a motion on the floor, it's been motion, made and seconded. Commissioner Head?
Yeah.
Commissioner Lemon doll?
Yes.
Commissioner Thielen's a yes, and so the motion passes.
At 4:52.
At 4:52, thank you.
Real quick question from the recorder though, which commissioner put forth the motion and which commissioner seconded?
I put forth the motion.
Commissioner Head puts forth the motion, Commissioner Lemon doll seconded.
Thank you.
Okay, are we, so I, I, just before we go to the comprehensive plan piece, I wanted to do a time check.
We don't have to do that comprehensive plan piece.
So I'd like to, I'd like to put a couple items ahead of that. If we get to that, great, but I, but I think that we, and I'd like to move that item D on other business up to the, to the next slot because I think it's something that's, that's important. So under other business, so let's, let's put off the comprehensive plan review for just the, for the moment anyway. And let's take up other business number seven. And I'd like to start with item D, review of approval process for the planning clearance and building permits for commercially zoned properties. That's pages 65 through 71 in our, in our packet. And if we have time, we'll go back together.
I think it's the last.
It's page...
72?
72. Did, Joseph, do you want to lead us up on this or?
This is a planning clearance form that Crystal and I have gone through and updated. It now is up to what our code currently says. This item went on the agenda because none of the commissioners requested it sort of offhandedly at the last meeting and it was brought up again a little bit today. It was mostly here for me to hear the commissioners' thoughts. And I included the up-to-date application so you can, you know, have something to refer to as we discuss what sort of things we would like to change about the review process for the commercially zoned, although now it sounds like it might be 10 MU zoning instead of commercially zoned.
I would think that the 10 MU, since it's a mixed use
Yeah.
of commercial and residential. I think that would be included.
Yeah, I think so too.
So that would be something to add to your list.
Okay.
So do other commissioners, do commissioners have other comments of, on the next one? Commissioner Lemon doll?
What do you mean, what do you mean 10 MU would be?
I, what I mean is that since 10 MU is a, is a commercial, is a mixed-use zone where commercial property, where commercial uses are approved, that it should, that we should be also discussing?
Yeah, but it's not in this.
Yeah, I thought it was just for commercial properties, so I have...
Because every zone is different, even though it's...
I understand, I, yes, I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm just saying that that's maybe next time we look at one that's, that includes 10 MU. Thank you for the clarification because that really wasn't clear. That's what I meant, but I didn't really say it. We're not going to add 10 MU to the name of this, I don't understand. Commissioner Lemon doll?
I had a concern about, we had a discussion at one point in time that we would ask that the applicant bring back the sign that we, the city, could check off and note, and note that they have, that they were approved by the county. And there have been no changes from, like, they didn't put in residential and get changes to commercial and we don't know anything about that sort of thing to go on. So if we could, there was some discussion that we would know that they got approval before they started building. We don't have a process for that.
Yeah, I, I'm interested in that also. Was that something that, is that in our code somewhere or is that something we requested? Refresh my memory. Or is that, did we just request that?
We just...
I remember we talked about it, we talked about it.
We did talk about it. Some people felt like, well, there's no enforcement on it. But I think it would be proper for someone to present their approval to the city so that we can track if they actually decided approval.
I understand, sorry, was that the, that the city, and I was gone for a portion of last year because of my father, but at the city council, there was a building project where it started out as residential, but it clearly wasn't. And then it became...
That was the 10 MU.
Yeah, and it went to the county and then it changed to, it started here as residential, changed to commercial at the county, but didn't have to come back to the city for approval. So my understanding was that, that the city council did address that loophole in ordinance, but I'm not sure where it ended up in the ordinance, yeah.
You have to change yours.
Really?
Maybe it's just a discussion.
Well, you'd have to change, you would have to change your planning ordinance and there should be no change in a planning ordinance unless they're talking about some other ordinance that they have.
Could you not include that requirement on your planning clearance form? Why couldn't you?
I mean, I don't think you'd have to have it in an ordinance.
Right, that's what I'm saying. You wouldn't have to do it in an ordinance. We could just put it on our planning clearance form as a...
Didn't somebody say that? It's not on there now.
It's not, I didn't see, I didn't see it.
No, it's not, it's not on there now.
I think it could be put on there, please.
So, does, so who, how, who has the authority to do that? I guess that, that's what I'm wondering, is, does the city manager have the ability to do that as a part of the process?
I think, I mean, this, this, this is a tool, not, and as long as it doesn't conflict with the codes, there's nothing wrong with changing a tool. I mean, an application is a tool, so we always, we could do a new application and then ask somebody.
So, so we could require them to bring the permit back to the city before, before construction commences?
There is way, you know, before. I don't know how they, I don't know when they could.
Something has to have the permit approved before they start the brick ground. So they could bring it to us before they break ground.
They could bring it to us when they get it.
When they get it.
Or there could be a final process here that says, you know, approved by the county as submitted from, or as approved by the city to, or what other option to indicate that the plan's changed completely from the time that the city approved the application to, you know, the time that they're going to start building. Because how else would we know?
I think it's a really good idea and I wonder if it would, if there would have to be something, if there would have to be penalties or, I mean, would, would there have to be teeth? Otherwise, would it just be ignored? How would that?
Yeah, I'm not sure about how the building process starts, but, I mean, do you make the build, the commencement of the building process contingent upon that coming, that information coming back from the county? The building can't start until the city gets back the plans from the county so that the city can evaluate whether they've changed substantially or whether they are still as they were submitted.
Can we just request that the county send us a copy of the final?
I think...
We could request.
We could request, we'd have less teeth.
I'm, that's what I'm wondering is what, where, where is the jurisdictional requirement to do something like this? Uh, Crystal?
There's other things we don't know and I have never known. And those are whether, whether the building codes, names for commercial and residential are the same as ours or whether those words they use are part of the assessor's office. Because there are two, there are different words that mean two different things to different jurisdictions. An assessor's office has... has commercial on land, but it's somewhat related to our zoning, but it's not the same thing. And you can't use an assessor's office C, that means commercial, which a lot of cities do that by mistake, especially small cities, because they think they can use the assessor's office C. And the C has to do with the value that the assessor's office puts on it rather than the zoning. So, it's very complicated, and that's the only reason that I sometimes question this, because it's like, are we going to find things that really aren't really going to tell us things anyway, because they have a different code system? And I'm not saying that they're not supposed to do what we say. I'm saying that it may- they may not call it the same thing.
Well, I mean, there's- there's global terms, you know, like residential and commercial here, for example, and I mean, had, you know, that's a pretty basic, right? I mean, are those-
The assessor's office calls different things. They put those cars and seats-
Okay.
Well, but on the building permit, on your- on your application that goes in from, uh, everything, it's marked off what they're considering as residential, and part of also what we want is, but part of what we want is to know that it actually got approved.
Or maybe there could be some standardization on our parts to be more aligned with. We can't change.
Well, I mean, we can find stuff and make some-
Right.
I don't know. I'm not saying it's true.
Right.
It could be, but I mean, that's part of, we could always, if there was a, oh, wow, you know, it looks like it's commercial, we always make a call. But that's just part of why this is important on here, because we really do want to know that they actually did get approval.
Because I do know that something said commercial that wasn't commercial, what we approved, but what I don't know, and it's- it's like, we would say, well, why don't you just call it, let it be inspected? Because they don't even talk the same language. You know, and you would have to sit down and see a whole bunch of it, and they don't want to mess with us. They're doing their own thing. I mean, that's-
I think that's more of a rare-
That situation probably is more of a rarity and probably, yeah, it doesn't happen all the time. It happens maybe to a particular entity or something, but also the fact that we do want to know that they submitted their plans, their plans were approved, and we need to have them come back and show it, and that should be simple.
I think that- I think you hit the nail on the head right there, Commissioner Lovigal. We're- it's not- we can't- we're not going to solve- we are citizens. We're not going to solve this. But what we can say is we want the permit to come back. We want the- the thing that we sign off on, we want it to be the same when it comes back, and we want so that it- it- there's not some sleight of hand.
I agree.
Go on. So, I- um, I'm willing to bring this to Mr. Huddle if he'll talk, but if he'll- if he's not, if he- if I get his opinion and or maybe he has some suggestions. Being a lawyer, being around this stuff for a long time, maybe he has a- maybe he has a way and understands the teeth or the authority or how it would be worded. But I like- but I would- I would entertain a motion that- that would, um, put us on record that that's what we would like to have in simple language, rather than- rather than getting into all the details of commercial or assessors and- and- and just say that, and I- you said it, just what you just said. I thought it would be a really good motion.
I move that we recommend to change the planning clearance application by adding that a requirement that the applicant bring back the approved permit from the county for review by the city. That work?
Yes. It- it would. Do you want to say the reason, or just- just get it done?
Oh, okay. So that we know that the applicant has, in fact, received a clearance from the county. And that it is the same. We don't want- maybe the one that just received or approval.
Okay, can we- can we second and then discuss maybe we can amend it?
Uh, yeah, let's do that.
Okay, I second the motion.
Okay, now we can-
And I think what- what you said earlier was to ensure that the- that the- what's being built is what the city approved.
Yes.
Yeah, that is the thing that you said at that.
So, can you rephrase? Would you like to rephrase the whole thing, or would you? People, can you say what we have?
Uh, motions to recommend to change the planning clearance application by adding applicant must bring back signed permit uh, so that we know the clearance is for the same work.
Sorry, can you say the last part, that we know that?
The clearance is for the same work.
Okay.
To ensure the work is the same, I believe we would ensure-
To ensure that- that the plans are the same as what the city initially approved.
So, will you amend? Would you amend that, Commissioner Lovigal, to amend your motion to that?
Yes, I amend my motion, what was stated.
Okay, and then?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Can we have a reading of that, please?
Motions to recommend to change the planning clearance application by adding applicant must bring back signed permit so that we know the, uh, to ensure that the plans are the same as the initial approval.
Initial plans approved by the city.
Initial.
Plans approved by the city.
Plans approved by the city.
Should we change that, bring back, they must return the approved application to the city, or, yeah, copy?
It- it's- Okay, so, in discussion, it- it's, well, I'm not going to get into it because it's a detail. I think this is what we want, and- and, uh, better minds than mine will, uh, either find a way or whatever. Uh, okay, uh, let's vote on it. Commissioner Head?
Yeah.
Commissioner Lovigal?
Yes.
Commissioner Thielen is a yes. Carry it, uh, five twelve. Yeah. Uh, anything else on these forms?
I have another question.
Yes.
I have... So, the- the planning clearance application for, um, the ten MU is different than di- On the planning clearance application for the ten MU, there was the inclusion of a box that said single-family dwelling, right? S F D. Is that synonymous with residential? I mean, are there other types of?
There's single-family dwellings, there's duplexes, there's-
Those are also considered residential. So, resident- what does residential mean here? Can you define that for me on the specific, on the form here for the commercial zone?
It doesn't say residential. It says, single-family dwelling or duplex.
Wait, where- I'm on the- Am I looking at the right? It says right on the front here, project description, including all accessory uses and or structures, residential, commercial, partial zone.
What page are you on?
Um, page seventy-two. Are there two?
Oh.
Uh, that would be a checkbox, so, uh, most cases it would be checked for commercial.
This is from all the zones.
So, this- So, this is to check which, is this about the use of the structure, or?
That would be the re- residential would be where people live. Commercial would be where a business.
So, this is also the planning clearance application for residential zones, for R one, R two?
This page of it is on other, um-
Okay.
Applications for other zones.
So, the ten MU is separate altogether?
Uh, I believe the ten MU would be what is constituted by the partial zone.
Oh, okay.
I might be mistaken on that, though. That-
Yeah, I was going to ask, what is partial zone?
Yeah, that's what I thought it was.
Well, I think this is something else.
You think it's something else?
I think this is maybe like a, um-
Like if it has two different zones on one property?
Well, now, parcel zone, I think this it's not a use like a residential use or a commercial use. This might be something like a, um, fishing, but I don't-
Okay.
I don't know.
So, is it possible to have? It's so, it seems like this is about the zone that the structure is going to be located in. Could- could it be zone, colon, and then residential, commercial? You know, I think we should call the zones by their name.
Right.
We have different zones. We have, you know, we have multiple commercial zones, right? There's the four C and something else. There's the ten MU. There's two residential. Why aren't we specifying?
What we do when we actually do the planning clearance. I don't know why we have this. This is for- This is interesting. This is kind of a-
This is informational.
Information.
Where- so, is it- where is the page that talks about which zone the structure is?
The checklist for specific commercial zone information starts on page seventy-four.
Seventy-four. Seventy-one, seventy-three. I mean, there, seventy-four.
That's the chart. Yeah, I've got it to seven, okay.
Is that so, on your page seventy-four, that where on the right column where it says complies, is that where a check would go, or?
Yeah, it would be a check, or a yes, or, uh, like you said, a note, uh, about, you know, whether or not, uh, there are conditions that make it appropriate. Or, uh, you know, in the case of it doesn't conform, then a no would go in one of those boxes.
Would you like circle, like, single-family dwelling?
Yep, usually, uh, if we were looking at, you know, a single-family dwelling in a commercial zone, I would say complies, yes, and then I would circle that, or if it was a, um, hospital going in, I would circle or highlight, you know, what the specific zone is. But when we get things like the manufactured homes, it might be, you know, checking off each individual item to make sure that each of those items confirms, and then just on the box on the right, uh, yes.
It complies with the, uh, use of that zone.
I would like to say that that manufactured home thing at the bottom of page seventy-four is exactly the kind of thing that our code update would deal with, because this is not legal.
Hmm.
It doesn't- it stayed off.
Yeah.
Okay. So, it's not clear what this first page is? This isn't the first page of the application on seventy-two?
No, it's the first page of the application. And now that I've had a little time to, uh, look at it and think about it, I believe you were right where if you were using it for a residential purpose, you would check residential, but if you're using it for a commercial purpose, you would check commercial.
Okay, so this is related to the-
Do you think that partial zone just might be?
Yeah.
Oh.
Maybe.
Oh, right.
Okay, that's really unclear.
Which is someone partial on the parcel?
Okay.
Seems like it should be more clear.
When we see ten MU and-
Right, okay.
I will update that.
Okay, yeah, thanks. Okay, so I have another question. When- when a- a planning clearance application comes in, how do they demonstrate that they have water or sewer?
Uh, they need to have the head of public works sign off, uh, that it a- if they have city sewer and water, it would be through the head of public works. Um, because of the procurement that we're in, uh, we have to take alternative means for proof of water. Uh, so what we've been doing, at least all of you should be aware, would be a water well contract. Uh, the only time that that's been applicable, though, has been in public hearings thus far, so, uh, the planning commissioners seen what we would need for proof of, uh, water.
Okay, so public works signs off because at some point they paid for a water hookup? And what- and public works keeps track of that?
Uh, the city office keeps track of that. Uh, city, the public works guys would be able to verify whether or not it's possible to do the hookup.
Okay. So, water could be paid, but it couldn't be not possible?
Um, more like if the sewer main is close enough, they could verify whether they could actually do a sewer hookup, uh, or if they would have to go septic.
Hmm, can we allow septic in the city?
I don't think, under normal circumstances. Uh, I think there are a few that have been grandfathered in, and, uh, it might depend on the location. Uh, or there might be some that were approved with their variances. No? No, okay.
Well, not that I need to-
Okay.
If somebody else can make them.
I didn't think they were, um, but I'm not, I don't know. I'd love to know the answer to that. You'll probably have to look it up.
It's probably grand public themselves.
No, there are septic systems that, you know, down, uh, there are some like roads outside of the city, but there's old septic systems that were, I'm sorry, they're not used anymore. I- I have a question about-
Yes, Commissioner Lovigal, go ahead.
The old, there was a form, and I should recall, it said it was either well or- or city or- those are two options. And now we just say, depending on how waters may develop to a property. So, people, what's to prevent people, you know, we don't- we're not allowing water. I don't know why we have to. Anyway, um, water available to the property, what is to prevent people from just saying, I'm- I'm going to, with this form, I just want to put in a well, because it's less expensive than you think. And we have wells all- all over town. We haven't really addressed that situation. I'm just concerned as a planning situation.
As- as far as I'm aware, city would have to approve the well, county would have to approve the well. I don't know how to answer it other than that, because there are people-
I mean, I'm wondering if we want to have, again, because how water is made, it sounds like it's being left up to the person that is putting up the building permit. Are we going to change this as soon as the moratoriums lifted?
Uh, if they, I would probably should update it once the moratoriums lifted, because that's a major planning obstacle right now.
Yeah, it just seems like right now we've got a lot of building going on in the city, and you have a lot of wells, must have a lot of wells going in. So, I just don't want this to become an avenue that people can avoid looking up to city resources. Infrastructure.
Anything else? I am going to- I'm still just seeing if we have anything else to say.
Well, I just want to thank Crystal for the- for the planning training. It was really helpful.
Oh, there's still, no, we're still-
We're still talking about-
We still have this, we have more business to do. I'd like, if we're done with this, I'd like to move on.
Yeah. I thought you were gonna- I thought you were about to end the meeting.
No, we have, uh, planning commission comment. I'd like to elect the Pete, the planning commission secretary. We don't have a secretary, and we're supposedly, the secretary signs plats in, according to our, uh, ordinances. So, uh, I believe Joseph is the city person who's, uh, the-
Kind of plats?
The person to do.
What kind of plats?
Kind of plats?
The secretary signs plats and other official documents in the planning commission. Mr. Huddle didn't know that either.
Well, but we don't, well, our code says who signs the plats.
Can you repeat that, Crystal?
Under each- under each- Under each, under each, um, plat. That type of plat, whether it's a, that's why I was asking. Because whether it's a, um, a division plat, a minor petition plat, or a major petition plat, it says who signs.
Okay, the city code says that.
But Joseph is the.
Regardless.
Secretary as well.
Okay. Are you saying we don't need to like that?
Well, we probably should, I don't know, I don't know.
I would like to have, I would like to have a secretary on record.
Who's secretary?
Just because I'm the chair and I, I'm kind of an official kind of a guy.
Secretary responsible for taking minutes and.
Secretary shall sign plats and other official documents to the planning commission and see the recommendations of the planning commission are recorded to the city council. Secretary shall ensure the minutes of the planning commission meetings are recorded for someone, or even O R S one ninety-two sixty-eight. That's the one I was talking about.
This is all stuff he does, Patty did.
He does, and they do, we don't, we, we elected Patty.
Yeah.
Every, so we should elect him.
Just, just to block the job.
I will happily do whatever I can to help the city and its commissions.
Do we have a mo, do we have a nomination? Commissioner Lovinoff.
I will nominate Joseph Harrison as the secretary for the planning committee.
Second.
We moved and seconded the discussion? I think it's a great idea. Commissioner Head.
Yes.
Commissioner Lovinoff.
Yes.
Commissioner Thielen is a yes. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, I am honored to be given the position.
I think it's especially good, also because, um, you always have to have somebody on the stuff when you do grants and stuff with the L C D. And I feel like Joseph is the best one, because he's in the office the most. And so if anything comes, you want it quickly, they'll, you know, like, you get something and says, well, you guys didn't do this.
I agree, yeah.
Then there's somebody there answering it, saying, well, I'll get somebody on this. And that's, and he's really good at that.
Thank you, thank you, Joseph.
Thank you.
Uh, are, uh, city planner, are there comments? No? I have a comment, so we're gonna have planning commission comments, I have a comment. Uh, I would like to, I believe our next meeting is the.
First?
First, and I cannot be here on the first. I was wondering if people would be willing to move it to the next Tuesday. Would be the eighth? If, I'm sure that, uh, Commissioner Barrett would be happy to run the meeting, uh, but I cannot be here.
That's all it takes.
So.
I don't have a problem with the, um, or the first.
Okay, so let's, 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 can we meet on the, we'd like to meet on the eighth.
Okay.
Okay, if you, if you would put that in our minutes, that's all we're gonna do. Thank you. It'll be, it'll be the eighth, I appreciate you guys doing that. Planning commission comments.
Okay, now is where I thank Crystal for the presentation. Thank you for the training, that was very helpful.
And you too.
And Joseph, yeah, thanks for putting like, uh, you know, these things in the package, appreciate it.
Thank you for volunteering your time to help the city by being a member of one of our commissions. We need more citizens volunteering to serve commissions and committees.
Yeah, I love that, sir. I'd like to thank the other commissions for delving into these subjects deeply and bringing up motions and opinions. It's awesome.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Uh, I actually would also like to thank Commissioner Head for giving me directive on the minutes. Uh, getting feedback helps me grow as a person, so if there are things I can do to, you know, be better at my job, please tell me.
Sure, thanks, yeah, it's just that after like a busy month of working and writing papers, you know, I come to the minute as a reminder to bring myself back to the previous meeting.
Yeah.
And, you know, all the things that transpired and the discussions and the more detail that's there, that's easier it is. I mean, I feel better our record is, you know?
It's better our record is, yeah.
It is our history. Okay, so that's basically it. The meeting is adjourned for five twenty-eight.
Awesome, right, yeah, thanks, Rob.
Thank you, you guys.